Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 25th, 2025 Newborn Board of Aldermen meeting. Prayer tonight's going to be given by Reverend Johnson.
To our Honorable Mayor and his fans, Board of Aldemans and City Council officials, thank you for allowing me to come before you to give the open prayer in the absence of Brother Kinsey. And we certainly ask for your prayers as well as for the prayers of the citizens for him as he recovers. Shall we pray? Love and gracious God, our Father, which art in heaven, the Maker of heaven and earth, the giver of all good and perfect gifts, we come before you. To thank you for washing over us all last night while we slumbered and slept in the image of death, sickness, death, troubles in the land surrounded us, but you've been a caring Father, a protective Father. You allowed those things not to stop at our bedside of our door on last night. And right early this morning, somewhere before the break of day, we don't know, but we do know one thing, that you've been an on-time God. You reached down and you touched each one of us with your hand of compassion, love, and mercy, life, health, and strength, and salvation, and breathed new, fresh, mercy, grace, life in our body. Here we are today.
Yes, Lord.
You blessed us to travel over the danger highways and byways so that we may meet together as a family. And we thank you, God, for this great historic city. We thank you, Lord, how you have blessed us from day one right up until this very present moment. You have opened doors for us. You have made ways for us. You have dealt with situations that were beyond our control. So did God become today, not to represent ourselves, but to represent you. Ask you to bless this board, the mayor. Give them, the gods, an open ear, a heart of compassion and sensitivity as the citizens come before them to share issues and concerns that concern us all. So, Lord, you have your way within us, that you may receive the glory and the honor from this meeting. And when we depart from this meeting tonight, that we will go in peace and continue to make a greater difference in our city in Jesus mighty name and in the Redeemer of the Lord. Say amen.
Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so. It's a pleasure to lead through the slide of our country. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call and roll.
Alderman Freel.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
President.
Okay, Board, item number four is to approve, or item number three is to approve the agenda. Do you want to have any changes you'd like to make?
Make a motion. Go ahead. Here ain't no comment. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, agenda's approved. Next is the consent agenda. The only item there is to approve the minutes. It's the pleasure of the Board on the consent agenda.
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Prove the minutes.
Yes, sir, for the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The minutes are the only thing on the consent agenda, so.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Next up is item five and also item number six. If these are unanimous, we can combine these. So, item number five is to consider adopting a resolution to sell 724 Oak Street. And item number six is considered adopting a resolution to sell 1006 Williams Street. Mr. Hughes.
On the first item, B C J Development LLC submitted a bid in the amount of $3,000 for the purchase of the property. This is a .14, .142 acre residential tract with a tax value of $6,000. It was acquired by the city and county in January of 2017 through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for this bid, the city will receive $1,130.04 and the county will receive $1,869.69. On the second property, B C J Development LLC has submitted a bid in the amount of $3,000 for this property. The size is a .116 acre tract that was jointly acquired by the city and county in August of 2013 through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for this amount, the city will receive $848.14 and the county will receive $2,151.86 from the proceeds.
Board have questions?
Mayor, if there's no questions, and I know this is broke up, one is in Ward Two, one is in Ward Five, if Alderman Royal doesn't have an objection, so I make a motion. I make a motion to adopt a resolution to sell 724 Oak Street and to a resolution to sell 1006 Williams Street.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Freel.
Alderman Freel.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number seven, same thing, seven and eight can be combined, so I'll read them both. Number seven is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with T A Loving for the Pinehurst Pump Station renovations. And item number eight is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Trader Construction Company for Hurricane Florence Cat D damage repairs for multiple drainage basins. Mr. Childs.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. The first item on the agenda is the Pinehurst Pump Station. It was identified as in need of outfit and required change out. And we originally had this designed and advertised for bid in July. At that time, we received less than the required bids and had to re-advertise. On September 23rd, we received two bids for this project and opened at a low bidder for the project being T Loving Company with a total base bid of $604,600. The low bid amount exceeded the allocated funding set forth by the Board appropriated Arpa. And so we had the engineers revise the scope and the plans, and we negotiated with T Loving off of those new revised plans with a negotiated price of $513,300, which was in the appropriated money. We, TRC has vetted T A Loving and found no issues or concerns, and we're recommending and requesting the Board consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts and all other documents related to this pump station renovation. The next item on the agenda is for the last of the Cat FEMA Cat D related to Hurricane Florence. So this is a multiple basin workup where we combined several of the smaller basins being Rennie's, Riverfront, North Clinton, Bernie, Bryce's, and Wilson into one package. On December 4th of 2024, the project was advertised for bids, and on February 25th, three bids were received and opened, the low bidder for the project being Trader Construction Company with a total base bid of $540,520. The multiple basin repairs consist of permanent structures such as headwalls, culverts, and bulkheads. The consultants have vetted the bid provided by Trader Construction, found no issues or concerns, and we're recommending to the Board consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this contract and all necessary documents related to it.
Does Board have questions on seven or eight?
I have questions on seven. George, is this additional repairs, something?
We had a failing pump station that we had known about, and the pump actually failed while we're in the original design, so we're at a point that this is a needed item to be done.
No, I mean, number eight, the basins.
Oh, the basins, this is the remaining Cat D, so this is the last one we'll have related to the Hurricane Florence Cat A or D.
Okay, so there were Cat D, a lot of Cat D was finalized, but okay.
Yes, ma'am, I've had several contracts for all the other basins that have either are being performed. Jimmy's right now is under contract, and this will be the last. So we've gone through all the other basins and completed that work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with T A Loving for the Pinehurst Pump Station renovations, and I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Trader Construction Company for the Hurricane Florence Category D Damage Repairs Multiple Drainage Basins Project.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Freel.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, George. Next up is item number nine, consider adopting an ordinance for the demolition of 722 First Avenue, Mr. Ezell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board.
Evening.
Good evening.
This evening, the staff is seeking approval for an ordinance to demolish the structure at 722 First Avenue. Staff has sent the owner a record and initial minimum housing letter in October of 2020 stating that the dwelling has deficiencies violating the city's minimum housing code. Staff has attempted to contact the owner via the phone and certified mail, but unable to continue any communications. We had initially had a conversation with the owner at the beginning of the case, where he said he was going to renovate the house and bring it back in, but since then, all attempts to communicate him via the phone, email, or written communications have failed. So we filed a complaint, the notice appearing in August of 2024, the certified mail being returned to center, the non-certified mail was not returned, and then by ordinance, that constitutes as delivery of the violation. The defendants never responded to any of our correspondence and never showed up to the hearing in September of 2024. Later on that month, the order to bill and inspect it was issued and served to the owners to bring the dwelling back into compliance with the minimum housing standards. That order expired in December of 2024. To date, there has been no further contact with the owner, no permits have been applied for, and the structure still remains non-compliance. Public Works has estimated the demolition of this property to $10,445.60, which again does not include asbestos testing and abatement. And the utility determinations have not yet been completed. Any questions?
Board have questions?
Yes, I do. Is there any such thing as a backlog for demolition? I know you're here frequently, and so I know there's got to be a lot of structures within the city that commands your attention. Is there a list per se, and that you're getting to each one as needed, or how does this work?
Yes, the way it works is once we have a property identified, House A doesn't meet the standards. We send our notifications to try to start communication with the property owners. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and eventually it may lead to filing a complaint, which brings us to the hearing. After the hearing, we talk to the owners as they show up, say, hey, look, here are your deficiencies with this property. What are your plans with this property? Sometimes they say, hey, we have a plan. Sometimes they don't even show up. That usually results in the issuing of the order to bill and inspect it. And there we classify the property in one or two segments, depending on what we classified is that brings us to where we are now, where we ask you for demolition orders to demolish. From there, depending on timeframe from other agencies, we have to do asbestos testing and abatement, that's one. And then once that gets done, we have to fit it into Public Works to demolish the property after that.
So again, my question is, is there, are there more homes that are sort of on a wait list or not?
For demolition, I wouldn't say more homes. There are some that are on there, there are some that are coming up, but we have to let the time processes of the order to bill and inspect it and hearings to come to what they are, and then put the package together to present to you. On the ones that don't require Board approval, those are just on the homeowners saying, hey, if you don't fix your home by the time specified in the order to bill and inspect it, that order expires, then the only thing that happens is fines begin to recur on those properties until ultimately the fines get paid or they go under tax foreclosure. It all depends on the classification of the property when you're issuing the order to bill and inspect it.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Patrick, can you give the Board an idea of how many houses are in the process for a demolition order?
We have approved three before this moment, four. I have at least two more that I'm working to prepare for future Board meetings, and there's probably a good 10 to 15, once I work through the process, could go towards demolition area, probably about 10 to 15. But I have to work through the entire process of notification with the property owners, filing the complaint, holding the hearing, seeing what they want to do with the properties, issuing the order from there, and seeing if they comply with the order.
Thank you, that answered, thank you.
Mr. Ezell, as usual, I'm going to ask you, I'm looking at these pictures, but this is not my, in my purview, can you save these structures? They're at their end of no repair now, or what?
As part of our assessment. Part of our assessment, we have to look at what the value of the house is, what would go off the tax value for this particular house. When I pulled the current tax value back in March of 2025, just the property of the structure, not to include the land, was approximately $30,000. And we take 75% of that $35,000 and make an estimate of whether or not they can bring that property back into minimum housing standard. Because of the damage done through the roof leak, which caused the ceiling on the first floor to leak into the floor of the second, the floor of the second floor, and eventually caused that ceiling to fall in the form of the first floor, causing those structural damages, not only the ceiling, the floor, both floor members and some of the wall members, my estimate was it would cost over $30,000 to bring this house back into compliance. Could it be done? Yes. The way the ordinance is written is it's over 75%, so we classify it as dilapidated, and that brings us to where we are now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mayor, hearing no further comments or questions, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the demolition of 722 First Avenue.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Freel.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Patrick. Next up is item number 10, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of offenses and miscellaneous provisions to add Section 4611, camping on public property prohibited. Captain Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board.
Evening.
The Police Department has observed instances where citizens are using public spaces as camping locations. Camping in public areas interferes with likes of others to use the spaces for which they are intended. Such activity can constitute a public health and safety hazard which adversely affects neighborhoods and commercial spaces. In keeping with a national trend to ban people from camping in public spaces, in the assistance of the city attorney, the proposed ordinance was crafted. Any questions related to the ordinance should be directed towards the city attorney. It is recommendation of the department that the Board of Aldermen approve to amend Chapter 46 of offenses and miscellaneous provisions by adding Section 4611, camping on public property prohibited. This would make the unlawful act in all publicly owned parts of the city.
Board have questions?
I do, but I'm going to refrain.
Okay. Any questions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of offenses and miscellaneous provisions to add Section 46-111, camping on public property prohibited.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Freel.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Cap. Item number 11, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Parks and Recreation, Section 5045 Park Hours. Ms. Warren.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
And Mayor. So we are requesting an ordinance amendment to add Jacksmith Creek Wetlands and Martin Marietta Park to the list of city parks and establish operating hours of dawn to dusk. Additionally, we would like to recommend the Mary White Park be removed from our park system and declared either surplus or transferred to the redevelopment commission for future development based on what their needs may be. During our 2024 Parks and Master, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, a recommendation was to look at disposal of some of our parks or repurpose them for another use, and at this time, we would like to pursue that with Mary White Park. In your packet, you should have seen a picture of the property, the tax parcel or property parcel ID, picture below off of G I S, and then a few things to go along with the actual property. It is .24 acres. Currently, it's used for green space with a swing bench and trash can, and is located across from Greenwood Cemetery. This park does not get any use that we note. There's no one ever out using the facilities. I did check on zoning restrictions. There are opportunities for it to possibly be permitted for a home or structure, and there would be accessibility for electric and water services at that property if was needed.
Carrie, where is, let me get back to it, where is the dawn of Miller Park?
That is on the water over Avenue A, I believe, at the end of Avenue A, over on.
By the railroad tracks?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I placed all the rest of them, but I wasn't for sure where that was located. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board have questions?
The park that is being recommended that we get rid of, or put it on as surplus property, there was a suggestion that maybe the redevelopment commission might have some interest in it. Have we spoken to the executive director to see whether the commission would potentially be interested in that?
Yes, I have spoken with him about that, and he's going to discuss that with the redevelopment commission at a future meeting.
Okay. So even if the Board, well, I guess we wouldn't be taking action tonight to actually donate it to the commission because that would be a separate action that would have to take place?
That's correct.
Okay.
In addition to that, were you finished?
Oh, go ahead.
In addition to that, will this bring in uniformity all of the park hours once we add these two?
Yes, ma'am, for all our large parks that would operate within dawn to dusk, and then if there were after hours, it's specified in there now.
Thank you.
This may be a question for Jamie. I guess what we're doing tonight is obviously fixing this ordinance with the hours, and it's removing Mary White Park. And like Alderman Freel just alluded to, we're not actually transferring this parcel tonight. So really, the only, the only concern that I have is the zoning on this property. It's I-2 zoning, I believe. I would like to see that changed before we would dispose of that, because I'm not sure I-2 is something that would, it's a park now, so it doesn't matter, but I-2 zoning is very liberal, and I'm not sure that that neighborhood would appreciate it if it was left I-2 on that corner where it is. So is it possible that if the redevelopment commission wants it, and they have an idea or a plan, that it could be rezoned? That would be my first question. Second question is, if redevelopment commission is not interested in it, can the city rezone it before we deem it surplus and sell it?
So the answer to both of those questions is yes. The redevelopment commission could request a rezoning, zoning map amendment to rezone the property to something that would be more conducive with compatible land uses and their purposes. And if for some reason the Board elects not to convey the property to the redevelopment commission, this Board can initiate a zoning map amendment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, I have one other question. We're looking here now, 17 parks, and taking out that particular one, we have 16 parks. All of these parks really utilized a lot? I mean, it's, because I can imagine all the maintenance that's involved with these parks, the upkeep and.
The ones that are listed on here are heavily used, and the ones that remain on here, there was only, let's see, one, one of these other ones that was recommended on our master plan for alternate use.
So I do want to make a clarification. There are 26 total parks that are recognized in the system. What you're seeing is a list of 17, so in that ordinance, I think the last line basically says if the park is not named, then the hours of operation fall from dusk to dawn, so they're all included. But as Carrie did state, several parks were listed as consideration to study, to determine basically, turning that property into surplus and things like that. So this is really the first property that the Parks and Recreation Director has presented. We've looked at a few others. Some of those parcels have reversion agreements, and so we're just kind of working through those processes, but you will be seeing more in the coming months. And these are all going to be parks where there's been little to no use over the years.
Right, exactly. That was, that was my point. That's a lot of parks, 26 parks.
Absolutely.
Any more questions?
Yeah, just, I think, a clarification for my benefit. If we approve this ordinance this evening, I mean, the paperwork, the backup paperwork has a red line through that park, but we're not specifically taking action on transferring that park property to surplus tonight. So should we be striking it off the list, not it tonight?
This will strike it off the list. With the hours of operations removed, this will strike it off the list. Parks and Recreation staff will remove the equipment that's out there, and really, the equipment is an outdated swing and a trash can. So it will just be a vacant lot after that.
Okay.
Most pleasure, the Board on item number 11.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Parks and Recreation, Section 50-45 Park Hours.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Freel.
Alderman Freel.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Warren. Item number 12, appointments. Does the Board have any appointments tonight?
None.
Okay, attorney's report?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report?
Few things to update you on. First of all, the pier project has started. Our contractors have installed quite a few pilings out of the pier location, so we're looking forward to actually seeing that work continue. Also, I want to let you know that the Pembroke Micro Surfacing Project is in full force. The crews have been out in the Pembroke community today, and so I was out there to look at that, and I think that the residents are going to be very pleased with what they get out of that. Also, want to congratulate Alice Wilson for receiving the outstanding service to the G I S Community Award that was presented to her by the North Carolina Geographic Coordinating Council. So we're proud of Alice for all of her accomplishments. That's all I have tonight, sir.
Okay, new business, starting with Alderman Freel.
I have nothing this evening. I have nothing this evening.
Okay, Alderman Royal?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
No, thanks, sir.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Yes, I too want to say congratulations to Ms. Alice Wilson. She is one fine employee. I've been knowing her for a long time. She is one hardworking, dedicated and lady. And that's all I have tonight.
And I have nothing. Do we need a closed session?
No, sir.
Okay, if not, an entertaining motion to adjourn.
Amen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we're adjourned.